Okay, so, um, first is call to order at 5:36.
5:36.
And roll call, Carla Braff.
Eliza Dieter.
Mary Broner Heinz.
Carrie Alfano, trustee liaison.
Gina Raccinelli, staff liaison.
Kathy Maywood.
Kathy Halloran.
Public comments on agenda items. Public comments on non-agenda items. Amendments to the agenda. I always forget to take that in for the special meetings.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think we just do that at the regular meeting, okay. So, um, business, 2025 events and budget.
What is our budget for this year?
Nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Really? Nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Budget for 2024.
Okay, so, let's see, first up, probably maybe just go in the same order we have been, like with what we do at the beginning of the year. In this case, it's pretty much March is when it starts, agreed? Finding Lucky? Okay. March, and did you want to do that again?
Sure.
Okay, and how much did you want to request for?
I think we read it to problems too, because that one business had a fire.
You want?
That one business have a fire.
Yeah, yeah, so we had four, and then it turned out to only be three. I do have an extra thing, an extra thing from Kim that we can wrap a lot of maybe at Autumn Jubilee, it's really nice honey soap and lip balm. Because of the Lucky, it's extra leftovers, so we can make that pretty. If you want to do the guess how many pumpkins again, and that could be a nice wrap gift.
Probably, yeah, because Leslie got a real.
And she'll be there too, she's gonna have a booth there too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So that's cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what did you average as far as what you did for those gifts? Do you have a cost for them?
It was, it's not on here, it was on my sheet, and I don't have that. I can probably log in, because I had it broken down by event.
So when does this Village Chamber Commerce thing come up? Do we just, it's automatic, it's just included?
So.
Oh, here it says 11:03.
Cheryl did it.
Yeah, so I think we'll have to vote on that, if we want to do the membership. I can't tell you that we benefited in any way from it, to be honest with you, it was kind of a miscommunication from what I recall, that it kind of got paid by accident.
Oh, okay.
We, Leslie and I, had received an email with the invoice from the Chamber. We were gonna reach out and say, what are we actually, what do we get for that? Hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Twenty-five dollars.
And then all of a sudden, we knew it was, we saw that it was paid, because it ended up somehow in Cheryl's desk. So I think we should vote on whether to do it or not, and if not, then we need to let Cheryl know maybe now.
I was pretty sure that where I heard this from either Cheryl, or Matt Harlan, or maybe even Leslie, or someone that the Village has a membership to that, and that covers anybody from a commission or anything that wants to be involved, and I don't know what to do.
The new director may not have known that.
Right.
Because it did come from her.
I'm thinking it just fell through the cracks, so.
Sure, but I think we should make sure we let everybody know. First, we should vote, vote to not renew then?
Correct.
Vote to not renew, okay. Do I have a motion?
My motion.
Okay, time out.
I just, um.
We don't want to be on it.
And I walked outside, so maybe you discuss this. I would want to just double check that the Village, since this is a Village Commission, I don't know if other Village Commissions have it. I just, I want to just check to make sure that if we.
I'm totally understood. I don't, I think we don't know what our hundred and twenty-five dollars actually paid for, I think is our bigger issue, and we didn't get the opportunity to ask that, and it got paid. So, we were trying to figure out what, what do we get?
Yeah.
What comes with this, I forget how it was worded, but it's a smaller membership, there's a special, no, it doesn't say.
Were we on anything? Were we in any brochure?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, see, my thought is, when you pay, at least the Chamber stuff that I have done in a previous life, you're then in a directory of businesses that are members of the Chamber. When people come into town and they, you know, want to know more about Philip Park, like if they're from out of town, or what have you, or someone comes in and says, I'm looking for an exterminator, and they give out, they'll hand out a book, you know, that has all the, to get rid of the cicadas maybe, but no.
No, it doesn't work, they said it won't work.
No, but what happens is you get, you get like a directory that has all the businesses in it. You're shaking your head?
Don't think that that's, at least when we moved in that. I never got, I never got anything like that.
I mean, I've seen stuff for like the platinum memberships, or you know, stuff like that, which obviously are more in it.
But we're not a business.
I know that, I know that for sure, that, I mean, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that Cheryl told me that when this came in, she just took care of it.
Agreed.
I think that's what, I think that's what happened.
What's, I think was the strange part is, because Leslie and I got the email from Jackie, and then before we could talk more of like, what does this cover, it had already been paid, so we didn't know how it went from Jackie's email to us, to the Pride email, to Cheryl's desk.
Oh, I don't know.
So that was a little confusing, which is fine, it is what it is.
Do you want me to look into that?
Like their, no, it's done, but thank you. We just don't want it to happen again, if it's not something that really benefits us, we'd rather put that money towards events.
Yeah, it just seemed to me like they asked for some volunteers from us.
And have you been a member previous years?
Well, we were a member, but there was no cost, because we were trading services for membership in a way, and that was done with Laura Schnetler.
Oh, okay.
So we were.
What about before her, what about with Alicia?
I don't know.
I don't know, that was before me, I don't know. But yeah, we like.
We helped, but we were members.
Yes, we were at, we had cookies and stuff at Joyful Traditions. Dave brought the equipment and MC did for when Santa was there, and played holiday music. We helped do the lights, so it was kind of like a trade-off.
Yeah.
I mean, but that was Laura's offer.
Yeah, right. Jackie's been with it, you know.
About a year.
Yeah.
So she's new.
Yeah, and we even had a weird, the Village was trying to help with Joyful Traditions, because they were gonna have a new person in place, like right as that was starting. So, I went to, I was asked to go to a meeting with a couple board members to talk about, you know, different things regarding the event, and so I was entrusted with getting porta potties. Because, you know.
You have the connections.
I have connections. So I get the porta potties, and I make arrangements, and I tell them they're for the Chamber, and you know, I'm just placing the order on behalf of them, and, and they're like, yeah, okay, no problem, and then somebody who actually went to the event said, you know, there were two sets of porta potties out there. So to make a long story as short as I possibly can, the porta potties for the ones that I ordered still hadn't been paid yet. So I said to Jackie, I'm like, I ordered these on behalf of the Chamber. And she said, well, I didn't know anything, you know, about that, we, I ordered porta potties too. So I said, you know, there were a couple members in the meeting from the board, I said, talk to them, and see if they, you know, recall, and, and I'm telling you, I'm making this short, because it's September now, and it hasn't been paid from last December, and she said, just send me an invoice that has the information on it, which April will take care of it. Thinking, I know I didn't just make that up, I wouldn't have just ordered porta potties for.
I also heard, totally could be rumor, so yes, I know we're on recording, but I cannot say for certain, but I think she is departing from there as well, like very soon. So again, before Joyful Traditions?
Yeah, I, that's unfortunate, but we'll probably do the same thing, and this time, I want somebody to stamp, you know.
Stamp of approval.
Yeah. If I order the porta potties.
So, um.
But she is working on it now, I mean, she, I know she's doing stuff already.
No, no, no one 25.
We're talking budget, I say.
Okay.
I don't have a, don't misunderstand me, I just, when I found out that Cheryl paid it, I thought there was a reason that maybe she did above and beyond, you know, does the group want to be members or not?
No, I think she thought she was being asked from us to pay it, I think is what.
Something to do, something that needed to be done, so she just got it.
Sure, that's. It ends up on her desk to pay, so she thought that's what she was supposed to do, so it's fine.
She gets stuffed up.
So I apologize for interrupting, go ahead, didn't someone make a motion and vote?
Are we here to adjust how we do our budget, what we want on our budget? That's adjusting our budget in a way.
Yes, to me, yes. It's not on our budget, though.
But it was an expense.
It was an expense, yeah.
But it's not on our budget.
Correct, because we didn't prepare to get to pay it.
Right.
Because we had gotten it for free.
For free the year before, so we didn't include that. So we're voting like on these things out.
I just made, or somebody.
I would just like to be clear, so that going forward for next year, if we're not wanting it, that we need to let everybody know, the appropriate people know, we are not doing it, and not to pay any invoices that come in. So, make a motion to not pay a membership fee to the Chamber.
Yes, I motion to not pay a membership fee to the Chamber next year.
I second that motion.
Johnny on the spot.
Do we have to vote now?
You get it all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, so Lucky.
Last year I spent one thirty-seven seventy-four.
So we had budgeted two hundred, so do you feel comfortable, let's do two hundred again?
Yeah, if everyone's okay with that, just because I did get a couple donations, and that, that was about forty-five dollars, so that's about two hundred roughly, so I'm cool if everyone's okay with keeping that.
And just for Carrie and Gina, do we go through this list, come up with our dollar amounts, and then do a vote? Or do we vote on each individual item? Because I don't think we did that last time.
Um, I mean, it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, I suppose you can go, in my opinion, and you might know something, you know, different on, you know, your end, but I would go through the list, and if it's things that you all want to do, you can discuss, you know, discuss, and blah, 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 and how much money, and then if you get to someone, or, excuse me, if you get to something, and somebody says, you know, just like the first thing you voted on, you know, I'm not, I don't know if we want to do it exactly the same way, can we put that at the end, so we can have more of a discussion? But I think you can go, you know, in order.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and this isn't, I mean, there could be, there's gonna be changes, there's no cicada thing on that.
For sure.
You know, so.
For sure, so we can adjust like the dollars to be reallocated to something else, for sure.
Is it, um?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Sidewalk chalk, we had it five hundred dollars, which, oh, sorry, sorry, I'm going off of my fridge, thank you.
Oh, for your Christmas, because it's in April, it's in April, thank you. Snacks, water, and volunteers.
Yes, which this year Carla lost the receipt for, so it's totally fine.
donation, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Graphic contributions.
Do you remember how much you paid?
Would a hundred cover it?
Yes, it would, a hundred covered it, so.
I was thinking seventy-five even.
You're down three hundred, okay, okay. Landscape beautification, two fifty?
I think, I think we need to discuss that, because I'd like to take that to zero, and I think I'd like to see if we could move those pots, and see whoever's taking care of those pots at all around.
Ever again.
And let them take care of that, along with.
Let's take that, I agree. Get that off the budget.
Can the beautification be, can we just do our butterfly garden that we've got, a little pollinator garden, ramp that, ratchet that up a stitch?
Just focus on one thing.
Focus on that.
We have changed what this was, and this is really, really old school.
Yeah, so maybe a hundred?
Do you feel like a hundred for like? Do we want to keep it still called landscape beautification? I mean.
Pollinator garden.
Just call it pollinator.
Or fund commission garden.
Yeah, then we can focus on one thing, it's close to the house, I can walk there.
Hundred percent.
You're gonna walk down the street with a watering pot.
Right, and whether it be that, like maybe a little.
I took my bike with me.
Okay, so fun garden, one hundred dollars, that sounds good for pollinating, okay.
Pollinating, yes.
We'll fall at the fun, we'll fall at the fawn pollinator garden.
There you go.
Did you skip the prairie path cleanup or?
No, we said a hundred for that, we're good with that.
That was the one where I said I.
Lost the receipt.
Lost the receipt, so.
So kites and kicks.
Are we going, how much, a hundred?
Hundred for the garden. So kites and kicks and sidewalk chalk, are, we are kind of doing those together now?
Yeah.
I think you did that, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be talking.
Yeah, what's that?
I think that's what happened this year, I think it was combined.
Yeah, that's what I said, we did that together this year, so we're talking about it to insist together, I think.
So what do we expend on that now? You've got, you've got, you've got all the balls, and you've got all the bases, so that's not, so I was thinking, it's probably time to get more kites.
Yeah, so I'm down.
So maybe like three hundred dollars for kites.
I mean, I'm happy with the seven fifty.
That's a lot, I'm thinking.
But it's the food, the food too.
The hot dog guy said he'd come back, and he was happy with the way things went.
Yeah, and banners and signs.
Banners and signs. Now, what, yeah, we also have this promotion and advertising down here for a thousand dollars, so I don't know what's coming out of that.
I think that's like been t-shirts, stickers, business cards, those kind of general things, not necessarily for a specific.
Which we didn't really dive into this year.
Yes.
Not too much, a little bit, but not too much.
So we saw graphic arts, that was your banners and signs, right? Four ninety-five is what it was.
So do you think seven hundred and fifty for the whole shot, then we can lose that, whatever the, the sidewalk chalk five hundred, doesn't have to go in that either?
I think it should go into it. Yeah.
You, you want?
Because here's the thing, this is the first year we're gonna try to reuse the signs, and that was five hundred dollars we spent on signs. This is the first year we're gonna try to reuse, though. So I don't want to slash that budget in case we can't, in case my plan didn't work.
I don't know, you've got seven hundred and fifty and five hundred down.
But you want to make it eight, you want to make it.
Yeah, that's over a thousand dollars, or banners and.
Well, if you say three hundred for kites, and five hundred for signs, there's eight hundred right away.
And that's all you need. I, I'm thinking, I'm wondering, now we have our budget here for this, this year, here's nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, if we really want to do something about the clock tower, and have, I have a list here about eight or nine different.
Well, that's what we're gonna add to it, though, but.
Are, do you really think we're gonna get another ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars?
Okay, so we're gonna do, I'm cool.
I mean, this isn't that much, take.
We haven't even spent that much this year.
But I'm just trying to be physical.
Right, I'm cool if we're gonna take some of that money and move it towards our clock tower, we're gonna dive into that next year, headfirst, right?
That's what I'm thinking.
Is that the plan? I'm down with the plan, okay. I'm okay.
Like Kathy?
Hell, it's not like move money from one year.
Well, no, you can't.
Well, you can move it around from these.
A little bit.
Yeah, but I'm saying not like what we don't spend to something else.
No, but we can move this around, so I'm okay with saying, taking that sidewalk chalk five hundred bucks, and giving that to, to the clock tower, and then keeping within a budget of seven fifty, for chalk and for, are we not left?
I just don't want us to be real greedy, and then say, oh, well, oh, and besides, we want more.
I'm not sure that you can take your five hundred dollars and donate it to the clock tower, because you're taking.
No, we're not talking about that, we're talking about doing an event. We're talking about making another.
Oh, as a fundraiser.
I'm not donating anyone.
Like if she wanted to have like.
You want to use it for a clock tower, activity.
Yeah, we're talking about doing a separate event, so a separate event for next year would be to save the clock tower, back to the future.
Advertising the event.
Oh, yeah, 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 totally, you can totally do that.
Right, yes.
Is that gonna be for this year, then?
The upcoming year, yeah.
Twenty twenty-five. Did you get something like that told you what was the dollar amount you were supposed to stay within? Did the, did you get anything from Villa Chal, or? I just don't know how the commissions do that, so I wasn't sure.
I figure we're trying to kind of stick within our last year's budget, no?
I don't know that we've sent anything out, to my knowledge.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. No, 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 you have to have it, that's good.
When we, when we do a thing to, for you to give us money, you know, pay for our receipts and everything, there is a thing on there that you check, this purchase does not go over the budget of whatever. That's the only thing I've ever seen.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, I'm cool, if everyone's cool, because we have a lot of chalk, we have, I can, we can conserve our stuff, and do seven fifty for kites and kicks and sidewalk chalk, and then have that five hundred dollars for our clock tower, and then also then the like hundred and fifty from the leftover from the beautification. So that's like six fifty for.
I understand what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying? So we're sticking within this, to me, we're sticking within this number, but we're maybe just changing the way we do things.
A hundred percent.
Because we're adding a new event, but we're maybe scaling, or conserving what we have for kites and kicks already, and sidewalk chalk, because we have a lot of that stuff already for this year.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to seem too greedy, you know?
I don't want to seem greedy, but.
I think as we go through, we're gonna pick up other dollars for it, too.
But we're basically adding a whole new event, so we need money for that. So let's figure out how to get, how to get that money, based on money we've already got.
We'll get as little as we can from here.
Yeah, I mean.
What's next on your list?
Next is landscaping awards, one fifty, which that's pretty, we gotta stick to that.
So that means June, July, and August, so fifty dollars each.
Right, and I, I think that might even be kind of high, if, if this is just for, it has prizes, so now, if we're gonna go out and purchase like gift certificates or something from a, a local vendor, I, I just don't know how that's gonna work. We used to ask people to donate it, and, and if it, it's getting hard to get them even to give us twenty-five dollars.
I'm sure, they have everybody asking them.
Right, right, so now, and now, I don't, I don't mind, mind going and buying a gift certificate, but I'm, I'm concerned as to how we decide who we buy from and who we don't.
It came out of the head, then.
Maybe.
You know what I mean, like literally, then we're not being.
Just put, put, because, you know, it'll always be Michael Anthony's, everyone loves Michael Anthony's pizzas, and somebody might come, well, how come you never do Domino's pizzas? Yeah.
They've caused our crust to spill apart.
See, okay, so, I, I do think we should work on, if we are going to buy them, that we should work on something that's fair.
I think we should all just come with business names of things that our families can use.
You can't necessarily, you know, have a tent.
Maybe we advertise at one of our events, do you want to be considered?
Right, right, that would be a way to do it.
But we're good with the one, I'm good with the one fifty, because it's fifty dollars for three months, right?
I think so, I, do you think that's enough, fifty dollars for each month, do you think more is needed?
Well, yeah, I would, no, I was thinking, I think ten dollars for me to make the award should be more than enough, I mean, they're nothing special.
So then you're saying.
Then I said, if we want to do a twenty-five, that would be seventy-five, and twenty, so I guess the one fifty, I guess is right. It's okay, when I was doing, when I was thinking about this, I wasn't thinking that we were gonna go and spend money on buying gift certificates, so.
Okay, summer festival, one hundred. So this year, we were not available, so I think that that's something we need to think about, just for every event that we have listed.
Concerts in the park, summer festival.
And Fourth of July parade. So what are thoughts and feelings on that?
I like going to the concerts, but maybe, like every other one, it gets kind of a lot to, every Thursday going.
I'm not available on Thursdays.
As much as I hate to say this, I've had sports Thursdays, but what, what are we, what are we spending money on at concerts in the park? Sorry, I'm sorry if I asked that.
It's just snacks, and Leslie, Leslie bought some, I don't know how much she spent on them, some erasers, just, it's usually just.
I got an eraser.
Do you?
You gave me one.
But I kind of feel like that's in this thousand.
Yeah, I do, I got a coconut, I got a peanut, it looked exactly like a peanut.
Do you guys, do you all agree that like, Summer Festival concerts in the park and Fourth of July parade is stuff that's in this promotion and advertising? Stickers, totes, hats, giveaways?
Well, it could be if we did it all at once.
Because we're not paying these fees, this is candy, water, props, advertising, which really.
That's what this is.
You can take those three hundred dollars and also put them towards your, because I think that money is in here under stickers, magnets, hats, totes, and giveaways, because we're giving that stuff away at the Fourth of July at the.
Yeah.
You have to have a stack of it at the beginning, so that we had a pool.
So you don't pay to go into the Fourth of July parade, no? We didn't last year.
We didn't go into the parade, but we did pay fifty dollars to go into.
Previous year.
Previous year we did, yeah. We just, we didn't have anyone available. Do we want to keep that?
Yeah, I think we should keep it as an entry.
You want to keep the Fourth of July, a hundred bucks?
Yeah, because it was fifty to get in, and we thought, oh, maybe fifty just to buy stuff at Dollar General.
Well, too, I think we were like talking about passing out things, not, not candy things, but like passing out flyers of our upcoming things that we have to go the rest of the year, and stickers, and again, back into the marketing kind of stuff.
I think we keep it, but, you know. Keep the Fourth of July, though, and scrap the Summer Festival and Concerts in the Park, and just do the, because we don't pay for those booths, right?
No, then it wouldn't be so bad, too, if nobody showed up to them, and we passed one.
And then you take that, we could take that money and put it to.
So we think Fourth of July, we should put down to a hundred, is that what you said, or no?
Yeah, I think so.
That's probably playing it safe, too, because we don't know if the application fee is gonna go up.
Right.
To participate in the parade.
Again, not to stick my nose in, but we have a Halloween event that we invite community groups to participate in, that there would be no charge for your group to participate, and that's a way to promote the group, because like.
What is that?
Uh, this year, it'll be October eighteenth, it's a Friday, from six to eight, I think, so, like six to seven is the outside part, where the groups are, and kids go from booth to booth and kind of trick or treat, and then at around seven or seven fifteen, we usually have like some type of entertainment inside. But a lot of the businesses who give away treats and things, put their like business card with it, or coupon for something.
Oh, we came last year, the guy had the snakes.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we came, and I was like, wait, why aren't we here? I didn't think that to myself.
So the only reason why I'm mentioning it is not because there's a cost to go, but if you have, if you want to buy stuff to give away to the kids, because, you know, Because, you know, you might want to just put that in the back of your house.
I think it's really well attended.
Yeah, it really has been, hundreds.
Even if we take one of those.
Halloween happenings.
If we take one of those hundreds and put it into this promotions and advertising. I just think it could be under that umbrella.
I think so too. I can do right the concerts in the park and the summer festival, that is really everything that we really buy.
Right. And then that way it's streamlined for when we like put our receipts in and stuff too. Makes more sense.
True.
So we're kicking off the concerts in the park.
I will not be at this year's Halloween thing, because that is my son's wedding.
Oh, come on. Usually it's just maybe two people that, you know, yeah, you could do two. I mean, it's not like a, a long period of time, so.
Right. What time is it from?
I think it's six to eight.
Six to eight at night.
So you'd, you'd come around four thirty, five o'clock to set up.
That's the fun of it.
Okay, so then we're up with the Fourth of July parade, so what would be next? Next is sidewalk chalk, five hundred, we'll be obvious. Are taking that, are you putting it into kites and kicks, yep? And then autumn jubilee is five thousand.
I feel very comfortable leaving autumn jubilee at that dollar.
Perfect, I'm fine with it. Everyone go to autumn jubilee, five thousand. Cool. Halloween home contest, two winners, two hundred.
Uh, that could, I mean, I was again doing the ten dollars, so twenty.
We do more than two winners, I feel like.
Well, it depends, we did, what did we do, happy and scary last time? But then you might have to, well, the year before we did.
Right.
And so they said, well, let's just do this, and then so then it's like that, that makes a difference.
I'm okay to lower that down to like one twenty-five, because you're saying if there's two winners, I feel like the same dollar amounts as the landscape people.
Were we given gift certificates with everything?
Yeah, well, every one of the awards we give out, if, if we have money to do it, if we're gonna buy them.
Yeah, twenty-five or fifty?
Subt.
I guess if you keep it at.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Then a hundred dollars.
A hundred, but then you do the things, so maybe one fifty?
Or if we have two winners, then that's fifty dollars needed, plus Mary's.
Right.
Yeah, what I do isn't that expensive, you know? I, I have on here like twenty bucks a piece, but that's even.
I thought one twenty-five if they're fifty dollars each, if they're twenty-five dollars each, I'd say a hundred, and then that's more money to go towards the park.
Why don't we do, why don't we do one twenty-five, just do it in the middle there?
Yeah.
And just.
I said one twenty-five, because if you choose to have four winners, then.
Then you could, then you could, yeah, very good.
So does that mean this year you, you, they were donated?
We haven't even done any yet. We're in the process right now.
Didn't we, didn't you vote on the landscape?
We voted on one of them.
For landscaping, but not the Halloween decorations.
We've got to go buy them.
So you're going down to one twenty-five on both, Halloween and holiday.
Only September, my goodness.
Yeah, that's why this is so hard.
What's going on? It's still so hard. It's not Halloween.
I will say, and I don't want to get myself in any trouble, normally, especially in an economy like we've had with, you know, inflation, um, we typically don't reduce our expenditures if we feel like we're doing, um, you know, a similar event. I'm just gonna say that. You were waiting for me to say. You didn't want it.
Don't go down.
I didn't want to say it, but typically you would keep it, either keep it or.
Well, we're not reducing our expenditures, we're just moving it into a different event.
Is that what you're gonna do?
We don't want to, we're not going lower than ninety-two fifty.
For the clock tower, that's what it is.
We're taking that money and moving it to another event, because we have to do that, from what I understand.
Because this is what.
Right? We have to have it, we have to have it clear of where we're spending the money.
We could ask for more.
Yeah, we could just say, we'll give us another ten thousand for this.
You do have the largest by far budget.
I don't think they're gonna give us more.
Which is why I don't know that we should.
You do, but then we are also looking at a budget that you have right now of two, of nine thousand two hundred and fifty, and how much do we think we're gonna spend on fall fact?
That's.
Or fall, uh, autumn jubilee?
They'll want to know that. They'll want to know what you're predicting you're gonna spend out of this year.
That's why we almost need to special.
And if it's, if right now we only have eleven, oh, shy of eleven hundred dollars, it's gonna be a big ask if you ask for one.
So that's a very good point. If they gave you, the village gave you ninety-two fifty this year, if you spend, let's say, five thousand, if you ask for ninety-two fifty, again, they're gonna say, well.
Well, how can, how can you be so specific in a situation like this?
Well, the difference between.
Well, I know that cicada thing was a throw-in.
Yeah, but you can't be specific, but you can be ballpark, and fifty percent off isn't ballpark in some people's eyes.
Right, we haven't bought any of the, uh, gift certificates at all, yet.
Well, so they've all donated.
We can go buy.
Anything that you've received, you've had donated?
Nothing's donated. We have not received any.
Oh, you haven't gotten it yet? We haven't bought them yet.
No, we haven't done any of that yet.
Either.
That's autumn.
We haven't.
And that's uh, Halloween.
So let's keep it all the same then.
So that, that.
Why are we even here?
All right.
Let's go home, keep it all the same.
We're not taking anything down, but also like we don't have anything.
What I'm thinking of, what I wrote down so far, what I know from autumn jubilee, I feel, I think we're gonna get close to just that event, spending four thousand, and that's because of other things coming down, being a little bit less than what I thought they would be. We got a better price this year on the porta potties, we ended up not doing the hayride, and should we get to do the minibus? That is cheaper than the hayride was, which I was figuring around like, when I was estimating it out, seventeen hundred for hayride, and it's like nine fifty for the bus. Seventeen hundred is not what ended up what we voted on, because the lady that I talked to who was available was cheaper, who didn't end up coming through with her insurance, like, we all know that story, so. That was the other reason why I was trying to like spend more of those dollars, but in actuality, because we've had to constantly switch gears, it might be closer to four thousand, but without knowing like, what we're doing for our haunted trail exactly, I can't say.
All I'm saying is that if you, you have nine thousand dollars in your budget this year, ninety-two fifty, use it.
Or for three, what we're gonna spend.
Or you'll lose it.
Right, that's how it works at my school. You have to justify having it.
I teach you how to be fiscal.
I don't look at it as that. You know, that's kind of how it works in budgets.
That's not that different, but is it that different?
If your department wants it, you better prove what you need.
Right.
I'm sorry, just quickly, because I was, we were doing a million different things, I just want to go down the list real quick. The Prairie Pass cleanup, did we say a hundred?
We did.
Okay, and the, the beautification and landscaping for the sixth.
Which we are now calling the fun.
Pollinator garden.
Yes.
Is the two fifty the same?
One hundred.
Okay, one hundred. Um, kites and kicks, seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
Okay.
Which also includes sidewalk chalk.
Well, if you want to, if you want to make that.
So the sidewalk chalk and the kites and kicks is only seven fifty?
I, it doesn't, I, well, I was gonna take that money again and put it to.
Okay, fine. No, no, that's, that's cool.
So that's why.
So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say reallocated.
We can come up and see after your.
Right, okay.
Landscaping awards.
One fifty.
Okay. Summer festival, just to buy stuff to give away.
So we're gonna put that into a.
Advertising.
Mm-hmm, so zero.
Okay.
Concerts in the park is zero.
Okay.
We're just not making it a lot.
Fourth of July.
One fifty.
Okay. Okay, now we're at autumn jubilee, five thousand. You said you're gonna, you feel pretty comfortable, you'll spend at least four thousand?
I thought we're gonna go two hundred on Fourth of July.
I thought.
No.
No.
One fifty.
So.
Okay.
It's one fifty this year, but we didn't spend anything.
Right. We're gonna leave it at one fifty. It's just because nobody was available to be there.
I know that there was talk of hiring like the Ghostbusters and folks like that, so.
They're not available.
I know. But keep that in mind, because as you keep thinking about that.
Five thousand.
Maybe we need to get at them now.
For next year, yeah.
So we just keep Halloween home contest and everything the same.
Just keep it at two hundred.
And you got the other one, two fifty, why is one more? Oh, two and three winners.
Wait a second, I changed the two fifty to a hundred.
We're at a holiday home?
No, for the landscaping, is that right?
Yeah, we're talking about Halloween and holiday home.
Halloween and then holiday, so there's like, okay.
That's sorry, I thought we changed Halloween to a hundred and twenty-five.
Why don't we keep them, keep them there.
Two hundred.
Why don't we keep two hundred and two fifty?
Keeping it because we don't want to.
Okay.
And then holiday, well, you have holiday home at two fifty right now.
Yeah.
Three winners versus two.
Yeah.
Okay, joyful traditions and that.
So two fifties, right?
Yeah, two hundred and two fifty for, okay.
And then joyful?
Joyful traditions, that's five hundred, and it depends, that one year we went and we literally spent that much money because we went back to jewel and putting on cookies.
Was a crap ton of people having goodies.
Right, and, and we wanted everyone to have a cookie, so.
You weren't invited to joyful traditions?
We weren't invited, but we were members.
Um.
We were what?
Well, there was a new person.
Usually like freezing.
I mean, and that might have just been a.
Which is just why we're like, you know what, we rather allocate the hundred and twenty-five and potentially five hundred dollars to the clock.
Yeah, I don't even have to be there.
Are your feelings hurt though a little bit?
No.
Um, probably at the time, but now I kind of am like, whatever, it's, it was a very strange day, to be honest with you, it was like, our sign was gone from our tree and nobody knew what happened to it, and it, like, nobody else, nobody else was missing their sign from their tree. It was just a very strange sequence of events that I think that was like, hmm, what's going on here? Because it feels a little.
Have you talked to anybody about it?
No.
Okay.
Um, I actually take that back. The day of, we talked to Jackie, but being that she's new, she probably didn't even remember who we were. You know what I mean? It was our first time even meeting her in person.
Well, there's gonna be possibly, from what you have said, a new person that's coming in and.
I enjoyed that, being at joyful tradition, I had fun, and I would, I would like to do.
We need five hundred dollars, fair enough. I don't think we need five hundred dollars for that.
Whatever we have, we have.
Two fifty, yeah.
I have a different perspective on that though, because I think if you're, if it's, we're unifying neighbors, then I think joyful traditions is one of those.
Oh, I love it. I hope we should for sure do it.
So if five hundred is a lot. There should be a presence there, and I think.
Two fifty? So I guess my question is, and I'm not trying to sound butthurt, but I'm being legit, do we say, hey, can we be invited? But by the way, we don't want to pay that membership fee again. Do you know what I'm saying? So now that we're in an awkward.
I was going to offer, as the staff liaison, to um, talk with, you know, who the interim person is and who the new person is, so that, you know, I can explain what the history, what the fund commission has been. I don't know if that's my role, but I feel like it, it, it very well could be.
Do you have to be a member to have a booth at joyful traditions?
No.
I think, I, I, I agree with Gina, just because we don't, she has a little bit more of an in. Well, I know, but do you have to be a member to have a booth?
I don't know, the, um.
I don't know.
I will say that I also.
Are they members?
The boy scouts.
I don't think anybody else is paid for it. I think I'd just like to know if you have to be a member to be there.
Yeah.
Well.
If you don't, then you.
And you know what, there's gonna be a new person, so who knows?
And I don't know if this was a village, whatever groups Bob Wagner's involved with, I'm sorry, I don't remember them all. I just know it's more than one commission, and I don't know if his presence was a commission, or if it was his own.
He had a family, true.
Um, but he had a table there. He had a table there. I just don't know, I don't remember.
It was part of it, because they were doing.
It was ECC.
Yeah, they were doing um, energy saving things, like door, door, you know, rent drafts from coming in.
So I guess the question would be, does Bob Wagner have a membership, or, sorry, does that commission have a membership?
I, I, yes, we certainly can find that out, but I think the bigger thing here is that you participated before, you've given back, and you weren't invited last year, and you feel badly about that, and I think, I, I believe in glass half full, so I think it was an oversight.
Of that situation, just so you maybe have like the whole picture, because I think this is the last item, would be that they did not email Pride to talk about joyful traditions or joining joyful traditions, but they reached out to Dave specifically and asked Dave to um, emcee, like he did before, with our equipment and have the music going, and he figured, he was not at our meeting, and he didn't know.
Oh, so he assumed that you guys were gonna be there too.
And so he went and did it, because he thought we were gonna be there again and have a presence again. So it was just, it was a little strange that they didn't go to the chair people, or at least to Leslie, or the Pride email address. Um, to ask for us to emcee again, they went directly to Dave, and I just think that was a really strange approach.
Is it possible that Dave's name was in the file as the person who did?
The contact.
Or somebody said.
I'm just trying to, you know.
I get it, I get it, it's just weird that Dave was thought about, but us as a group wasn't thought about in that way. We bought a tree, which the last year was seventy-five dollars. I don't know how much the trees are gonna be this year, you don't know.
Yeah, I go up, we used to get it for preschool, and at first, when they first started doing it, it was, I think, free, but we've had to pay for ours too.
Which is fine, if we're going to put a line item for, for.
Then leave it five hundred, and then maybe Gina could help us figure out if there's a change.
Well, that's buying the tree, so that's seventy-five off.
I think, I want to just try. Let's just try and see what happens.
I'm always for an olive branch.
Oh, no, I'm not upset, I just was freezing. I think I just moved her, it was really cold. And being frozen, and that's all I remember. And so when they left us out, I was like.
It is.
I don't have to freeze.
Last year it was the same day though that Lombard was doing theirs, and so like.
That happens every year.
It's always the same day as the holiday train.
The holiday train, because I sang for the holiday train, and I went, yeah, it was a busy day.
So we can leave it.
I think so.
So we're.
Because it's seventy-five for the.
You would like to?
Yeah.
Oh, that's awesome. We don't have a date confirmed. I, I'm not trying to twist your arm, I'm just trying to, you know.
Well, I think it's.
Guys know what you're talking about.
We don't want to go down.
If we have reduced the example.
Okay, so with that, I'm gonna run through the numbers that I wrote down to, for my total. Finding Lucky, two hundred, Prairie Pass cleanup, one hundred, landscape beautification is considered zero, because now we're doing the fun pollinator garden for one hundred. Kites and kicks with sidewalk chalk included, seven fifty, landscape awards, I wrote one fifty, that's the June, July, August awards. Fourth of July, one fifty, autumn jubilee, five thousand, Halloween awards, two hundred, holiday awards, two fifty, joyful traditions, five hundred. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we're sticking with the thousand for the promotion.
For the promotion, a thousand.
Or are you adding more to that? Because you said you were gonna reallocate money.
Yeah, you're gonna reallocate two hundred dollars from something.
Hold on, before we go any further, before we even consider the marketing, just everything I wrote down is seven thousand two hundred and fifty. So if we were to put a thousand dollars in marketing materials, that leaves one thousand for the clock.
Sounds good to me.
And that brings us to ninety-two fifty again this year, just allocated to different events.
Is one thousand enough for the clock information, that, or clock that you're, you want to move over?
I don't, I think we should have a, you know, I think we did have a commission that we need to have, you know, there's so many days and, yeah, subcommittee and go through, because I have a, an idea of a ton, um, different events, that decide which ones we think will work. Two of them could maybe work with the summer fest, um, that, um, was it Joey had suggested that we, we work along. And that would be, this is Kathy's idea actually, and I don't know if we can even do this, but I already told, um, Mr. Patrick, Kevin Patrick, that I, I'm up here, for all these ideas, I'm up here, and whatever happens, happens, you know, if they, if they can't be done, or if they're in half, um, that's the way it is. But the two for summer fest, she's not even here, so, um, so I, I don't know, the dance, I think would be cool. I have no idea how much that would cost to put something like that.
That's not good. Do you think you need more than, do you think I need to be? Why don't you, we put, you know, we're, I think we should put some more money, and it's not, because we're, it's an extra thing.
But yeah, that's why.
So it's still, we're still doing, kites and kicks, we're still doing autumn jubilee, and now we're adding an extra thing.
I mean, I feel like one thousand is definitely a good amount, it's more than kites and kicks.
But it's not enough though.
Yeah, I, for sure, I said it was busy.
Well, okay, so let's, let's start over with the clock tower conversation. I thought the budget that you're requesting for clock tower is to be able to have fundraising events, so any tchotchkes, popcorn, those kinds of things, not to go towards the twenty thousand dollars needed.
Right, no, it's, it's, the money is for the event.
Event stuff.
And at each event, there would, I'm, I don't know, how would this work? Could we put a bowl, or could we get donations? How would you do that? What would you have to do? To, say you wanted to have trivia, Back to the Future. What would you have to do to, say you wanted to have trivia, uh, Back to the Future movie trivia, uh, at, um, a bar or wherever? And they donated their place for us to do this and we had an emcee.
And then people would pay a fee to participate.
Right.
And then you'd use what, after you pay your expenses, if there are any, then the money that you collect.
We would love to have like a box or a bowl that somebody's want, for extra, you know? Somebody wants to throw a twenty in, if they're, had a couple beers. So, is, do we, is there a permit, a special permit that you need for that?
Uh, but it's not really a raffle, no. I don't think you need a permit to do that someplace else.
I don't, I think you need to exactly know what you're doing, the event or events. And you really need to know how much you think you're gonna spend on it.
That's why it's, it's hard without having that whatcha ma diggy.
How is it, how are you gonna know?
There, I thought, for the, for the Summer Fest, I thought, I thought maybe this won't work. It'd be cool to have a little battle of the bands, maybe three bands.
Yeah.
Before the bands that you guys usually.
Or maybe we would just include them as entertainment.
Yeah, I could do that, that could be. Um, but I don't know, um, how much, um, like far, as far as equipment goes. I talked to Dave quickly about that. He goes, well, you probably need, uh, you'll need a drum set, because it's really hard if you're gonna have a battle of a band, where people are coming and going, to have the equipment moved and everything. So, that's why Dave would come in as far as the bandy pike thing.
Sure.
I don't know. I, would there be an expense for that? Would you have to rent a drum thing? We wouldn't need.
Maybe, because it's going, you're, you know, fundraising, maybe whoever you had rented from would, you know, would donate it for the day, or maybe only charge you.
Yeah. Or the, the amplifiers we have be enough, or would we have to rent bigger amplifiers?
So, like, if you did it at Summer Festival, we pay a sound group.
Oh, okay.
To come out, to be there all day. They handle all the sound.
So, that would be, so we'd have to work with you to see, you know, how we would work, work that, that.
Yeah, or we could, we could intermingle the battle in between, you know, either have them all together or in, in between the other entertainment. I mean, we, we're very open-minded to that.
So, and wouldn't it be really cool? Yeah, if you had a battle of the bands, if you could get the guys from Plain White Tees or the big guy from Plain White Tees.
Just thinking about that. That would be very nice.
As I said, I'm up here. So, and the other thing was Kathy had some idea about a cocktail party, a cocktail hour, something.
I don't even think it was alcohol. I just thought since it was five o'clock, you know, five o'clock, it's a cocktail hour.
And anybody that, that sees the movie remembers Lorraine Bates is the mother, and she's drinking from the vodka bottle in the movie. So, I thought it would be, wouldn't it be wonderful, you know, a Lorraine Bates cocktail hour or something?
At the San Summer Festival?
Yeah, I was thinking at Summer, I don't know if it would work. I was thinking it could be around the clock tower, where, you know, people with their cocktail that they got.
What do you mean, during Summer Festival?
From five to six, when the music has started or whatever.
Yeah, I would have to, you know, we have to look into what it's like for liquor licenses, you know?
So, I can tell you that last year, there was a Mrs. Roper pub crawl.
Yeah, from, from.
And I feel like you can totally incorporate something like that. You just have to talk to the bars and you have people sign up and they pay a fee and that money gets donated.
Yes, my only concern was to involve the vodka at Summer Festival.
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily vodka.
When we have a liquor license for beer.
Right, I was, that was just the tie-in with the movie was that.
But I wonder if standard metering would be able to put something together.
Well, that would be kinda, yeah.
And then like, have a. Maybe there's would go, to like, you have a cocktail.
Lorraine Bates, you know, five o'clock.
A whole separate thing.
That's why I'm saying.
That's why this is our subcommittee thing. And this is, how do you get a budget for twenty twenty-five? Like, how do you?
Well, I can just say, well, you know, we want this much.
It's due at the end of this month, and our, our budget is due last week.
Our meeting is in October. Like, that's the thing. Do you think a thousand?
Not, well, I don't know. Maybe it could, how much, if, if you get this.
I think with, with costs going up, I think.
I think the dance would be an expense.
One of them.
We haven't even met as a subcommittee.
You know, I have the trivia, I have, you know, a walk on the Prairie Path, uh, the hour for the tower, I think Dog Walk Einstein's Dog Walk.
You know, we have to have a. That office will be.
Well, you'd have to pick which ones you want. Which ones are the, maybe the cheapest?
Right.
The movie, I don't know if we can show them, because they showed the movie.
Why don't we go for even ten thousand?
And it was very, very sweary.
If you have a thousand plus.
I don't think it's gonna happen. I think she's saying that's not gonna happen.
All right. Me? I didn't have to make it work. I did not say that.
It would be a seven hundred and fifty dollar increase from last year. I honestly, I don't feel like it's quite that much.
If you feel like you need a thousand, put a thousand in. All they can do is say no.
Exactly.
So, then do we allocate them?
I hope the village manager doesn't listen to that and hear me say that. Well, you're over here.
How do, how do we know? That's what, that's what, I'm not a business, budget business person.
Do you want seventeen fifty?
I'm sorry, we make it ten thousand and we.
I, I agree with that. There's no way you're gonna have an answer. And whether it's not gonna be now and it's not gonna be in three months from now. So, we have to submit something.
I think the budget is due on, at the end of September.
Twenty, it's the last, it's the Thursday after our Tuesday meeting, twenty.
So, couldn't you, uh, like tighten everything up at that meeting in September?
Then we'd have another budget meeting.
No. No, cause it can be on the.
No, on the agenda. I'm saying, put it on your regular agenda.
Our normal Tuesday, September meeting.
And I don't. I'm here today, let's get it done.
I say that's good done. I don't think we're gonna, I don't feel like we're gonna have more answers.
No, 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 no.
We've, we've basically gotten a thousand dollars from what we've already gotten to, to this event, right?
All right.
Great. Thousand dollars. We asked for seventeen fifty for Save the Clock Tower events. So, that gives us an easy, even time. If they say no, great. Then we have a thousand dollars for Save the Clock Tower. And we just have to pair it to a thousand.
Yeah. That's it.
I totally agree.
Carla, what did we do last year when, when you, you needed more money? We went and said, this is what we wanna do.
So, that was because it was after the budgets were already submitted.
I still think that.
And that when we asked for additional money.
It wouldn't be a bad idea for you to come and explain this. Because when you see it on paper, I think it's a lot different than when you hear what the idea is.
Agreed, but how do we explain a clock tower when she doesn't know what she wants to do yet? Well, by that meaning, we're not planned. You know what I mean? So, I don't know.
Every chairperson, I'm almost positive, received something from the manager's office. I thought. That kind of explains the budget process and that if there was extra things, you know, that you wanted to do and extra money that you wanted to spend, you had to explain, explain that. You could write it in a memo, you could, I don't have that in front of me right now, but I can look it up if I, and we'll call you tomorrow if you want, let you know what I find. Uh, it's, you know, they, the door is open to doing new things, even if it involves spending more money, as long as, you know, there's a, a way to do it and, and the village can find it affordable. Uh, you know, I joke with you about your budget being so big, but you do a lot of things for the community with the money that you're allocated. So, it's not like, you know, you're just ordering pizzas, you know, every other week and that adds up. I mean, you're actually very much giving back, so, those are all great.
Due diligence in, in pairing this down to take that money to some new events. It's not like we're just willy-nilly asking for a bunch of money.
Right.
We've gone through this and said, okay, we can shade it down to give that to do some new things. And I feel like that's cool, too.
But like Jesse Alfonso said, it's helpful if you can explain what the process you went through. Because otherwise, they look at it and say, God, they asked for ninety-two fifty last year and now they're asking for ten thousand. What the heck? Oh, and they didn't spend ninety-two fifty this year. So, that's why, you know, you have to find a way to explain it.
For sure.
Explain what, you know, what you're using the money for.
I could certainly explain what I have.
Well, I would also explain how you shop around for things.
Right.
Because this is a group, this is a table of people who know how to shop.
Yes.
Who cut coupons and know how to do this kind of stuff.
For sure.
That's what we were all raised to do.
Yeah. And we ask around and ask for money and donations and what can you do and what.
We're given a lot of time.
I'm, I totally understand. I'll use Autumn Jubilee as the example of, if I don't necessarily get to five thousand dollars, but I know I need to spend it, but there are things that I kinda wanted some cushion of unknowns if I didn't have to pay the lady who's gonna come and do braids and she just charges guests, so that not everything is free, cause I think that's, oh, a five thousand dollar budget for everything to be free is not enough of a budget then.
That's something perfect that you can explain.
Right, okay.
You know, that's what you have, like, yes, like, okay, we asked, we received ninety-two fifty and, you know, we only spent seven thousand or whatever it is, but this is the reason why. Because we had this plan and this part didn't work out. And, you know, we were gonna hire somebody to do X, Y, Z, but instead she came, didn't charge us, charged, you know, peoples who were able to save money that way. And you do, you, you say all those things and then you say, you know, we'd like to get at least what we, you know, were awarded last year, you know, preferably a little bit more, because we have this, you know, goal of fund, raising funds to, for the clock tower. And, you know, you're adding an event.
So, we might be adding four events if it's, you know, all the things.
Very Summer Fest. Where, and if that's, you know, appropriate.
Right.
Well, the dance, I think, might encompass.
Is it okay that we don't go into extensive, specific details on what exactly the events will be for Saving the Clock Tower, since we don't know them today? We don't know exactly.
They don't have to be, you don't have to be specific with what the events are. But if you're asking for money, you have to explain what you're asking the mon, what you wanna do with the money that you're asking for.
We need a clearer idea.
Yeah, that's all. And this is where I'm saying, you don't have to turn this in today.
Right.
You know, take the time to, to develop it a little bit more. And I can, you know, I'll, I'll find out exactly how they want it, but, you know, I can be helpful. I've written a lot of mamas. Um, so I know, you know, kind of what they're looking for and, you know, I can be helpful in that way. I won't write it for you, but I, I will be helpful with getting it written.
And I feel like we're trying to be respectful in saving signs and reusing signs. And we reuse the metals and we don't spend. And we do all the graphics work ourselves.
That's good.
Fiscally conservative.
We do the exact same thing. We, we take the banner back in and they put the new numbers over. They last for ten years sometimes.
We do a lot. We do a lot of ideas.
Yeah. Okay, so, Save the Clock was.
I'm gonna go, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're gonna take care of the, and my little sign too. I don't, I'm supposed to take it.
Took some of that money?
Thank you so much.
Seventy more. And then we'll try to do Mary's. I just paid sixteen dollars to reactivate that and it's still not reactivated. I'm very annoyed. I'm gonna keep trying.
Okay, so we, promo's marketing materials was a thousand dollars and then Save the Clock is seventeen fifty, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty, which a new total of ten thousand.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to submit a budget for ten thousand?
Motion to submit the budget for ten thousand.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so.
I just need to ask a question. And believe me, I'm asking this with the greatest respect, because as you can imagine, I'm way behind y'all. I, I kinda feel like, like we're already to step B, but what happened with step A with regard to the clock tower? Like, am I, I'm just not aware that, has the council said? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, we think it's a worthy project, then yes, go ahead with it.
No.
Nope. We have to.
Oh, so we are, we have to submit a budget request and itemize what we plan to spend it on.
Next year.
Next year, and it's due at the end of this month. So, we needed to have this kind of powwow to decide those things. And I do think we can talk more about the clock at the next meeting, so that it's also before the budget's submitted, so we have a few more details perhaps.
Can we put that on the agenda?
Yeah.
There's also subcommittees.
So, we have to ask for money to do these things now?
So, we have to ask for the money before we even, they even approve any kind of work towards the development or rehabilitation?
So, oh, are you talking about for the clock?
Right.
No, we need to find out how much it's gonna cost. That's the key thing.
We've, we've been talking about that for probably about a year, two years, amongst ourselves in our group, about what it entails, who's in charge of it. We've all talked, been talking about it for a long time.
And I believe the manager's office is aware of it, because the questions have been fielded there.
Yeah.
But the last time I went to a meeting, like, the, the estimate of twenty thousand dollars was years ago. And then there was that reference that they don't even make that part for the clock anymore. So, I mean, exponentially, it could be like forty thousand dollars.
It could. And I think this is like, this is maybe like our efforts to get fundraising going. So, it's also, this is not like, this is gonna fix the clock.
Yeah.
This is efforts.
I understand, I understand, it's toward.
And because it's due September twenty-seventh or something like that.
Okay.
To get money for any kind of events we have.
Maybe you raise money.
And maybe we have to do four years of fundraising events to fix the clock tower. Might, maybe it's again next year.
Maybe we can do all of these events, maybe three of them next year.
Yeah. I feel so much better. I just feel like I missed a whole chapter.
Maybe we'll have to do that. It's still unknown.
And thank you for your patience.
No, maybe.
You feel like the process should be linear and it's not. The process isn't like this.
Yeah, that's why you say, how do I know how much? I don't even know what we're gonna do. I have a survey that I started too.
Okay.
So, we can put it out at our thing.
But for us, we feel like Mary did such a cool job in integrating it.
Oh, and that's why I asked with reluctance, just because I mean, I respect that.
This is just what we've all talked about for so long. This is just what we've all talked about for so long, and even if we're doing our best to try to do something cool. But it's a cool, it's cool ways to get the community together anyway, even just doing a dog, a 5K, moving the, whatever we can do, a dance, banter.
Maybe we should start smaller.
It's just all fun, community events, with the goal of like, hey, we can help this, the clock, let's fix the clock tower.
Yeah, maybe it is a more.
So we can pick the ones that, we can have a grand list, I said, up here.
One of those big.
Right, and then we'll do three this year, and then, okay, then as we do those, we can say, next year is gonna be a dance, under, in chapter.
I think you should start with the dance, and I, I think that.
We've been talking about doing a dance for a while.
I would love that.
We've been talking about doing a dance for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I'm not taking.
That case is a really fun to do.
Somebody charge, you charge $35 a pack, and you give them a cute shirt?
I think it'd be fun, someone suggested during COVID, and they were like, no, because we need a permit for the prairie path. Is at.
This is the thing for.
Fall time, is, um, it was like a light parade, and so it was, like, we bought stuff from Amazon, like light up clothes and masks and stuff, it was, my daughter had a mask that lit up and bounced to music, so we had this little, it was so fun sounding, and then they're like, oh, no, you can't, you need a permit with the, with the county. Somebody needs insurance, and I'm like, oh.
Oh, I want you to get insurance.
So maybe we do a light parade for Autumn Jubilee next year.
That would be for, like, a community.
We have to push it later at night, when it's dark.
What is it, uh?
That's okay.
Um, musical chairs. They do. Musical chairs, they like bring your chair, and then they do community musical chairs.
Don't give them this, those insecure.
And I love the concerts in the park. I hope you don't take them to every other week, even though you guys can't attend.
No, so we don't do per, put on concerts in the park. They attend concerts in the park as a fund commission and hand stuff out, so no.
That's all them.
Yes.
That's all the. Because I think it really does bring the community together, and there's all age groups, and it's so much fun.
I usually have to miss them, and I'm bummed, like, I know people who are in bands, and I'm like, you're right in my backyard, and I can't even come and see you, and, yeah. Last year, we were supposed to go, and we waited on people to show at our house to meet us, and they didn't come until the concert was over, and we just waited for nothing. I could've gone to the concert and come back home then, you know?
There aren't any in July, so it's just June and August.
So there's not concerts in the park in July, but Juanes puts on at the gazebo in July.
At the, on the prairie path.
Okay.
It's really, because more kids. So we saw Miss Jamie. Miss Jamie was awesome.
Oh, my, sorry, Commissioner comments?
No.
None.
Can we, I don't know what the timing is on that. Can we contact them to do, how much money do we have in the budget? Could we spend like $250 for a full-page ad?
For Autumn Jubilee?
I don't know how, how quickly you need it.
I'm not sure that you'd even have to pay for that, if it's village.
I can look, but I will tell you that I think we may have had trouble with them prior, but we can still try.
Let's try. Do you want me to try?
Sure.
There's a, there's a phone number. There's stuff in there.
There's stuff in there?
Right where your hand is. I think there's a list of, I don't know if it's a phone number or mail.
Okay, are there any Commissioner comments?
I'll work on this.
No. Mary?
I'm done. That was it. Although, I have this, and Leslie was gonna go with me to drop these off at people's houses, but I don't wanna do it by myself. My husband can't do it. Is there anybody that can go with me, three houses?
Do you want to just go now?
Well, we could, if you're in such a hurry, or if you got time tomorrow, what you're doing.
I'm hungry, but we can go.
They could do it tomorrow.
I'd like to eat dinner, Mary.
Five minutes tomorrow.
Well, make it fast, or let's just go. Let's just do it now.
But I don't have a cue to this thing now. Oh, well, okay, let's do it. One's on Ardmore, one's on Park, which I don't know, and one's, one's in Madison.
Any other Commissioner comments, any other Commissioner comments other than that?
No, no, sorry.
Comments?
No.
No comment.
We're all known.
Motion to adjourn?
I second.
No chairperson comments, a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
That's 46.
Kathy's second.
I did, I did.
Did you vote?
We voted on the budget, yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.